And there you go.
All right, it is 7:01 PM and we are calling this meeting of the Judiciary Personnel and Licensing Committee to order with all trustees on the committee present. We have two items on the agenda this evening. The first, to consider volunteer committee appointments, and the second, to consider amendments to Policy 33, attendance and training for volunteer committees and elected officials. And we will jump right into the volunteer committee appointments. So for the Recreation Advisory Board, we have one vacant seat and one applicant to be considered for that position. So I'd like to open up to the trustees on the committee first and then anyone else. Any, any conversation or is there a motion on that appointment?
No comments.
Yeah, and I think it looks like a good applicant. I'm just trying to find the...
You know, just to clarify, I think reviewing the application, she does talk a lot about library experience, so I originally thought that she may be just applying for the library board, but after speaking to Clerk Carroll, she in fact was recommended to apply for the Recreation Advisory Board through the Elder Services Board. So she is in fact wanting to be on that board.
All right, and I agree. I'm really glad that we've got some interest there. And as we've had the conversation throughout some of the, you know, throughout the process of appointments, definitely always looking to have more folks who are willing to raise their hand and be willing to serve on any of our boards and committees. But it sounds like we will, we have consensus on, on that appointment, which is great. And then, all right, I wasn't sure if we had them broken out for each appointment, but it looks like the motion is for all in one. Anybody else who wants to speak to this appointment?
I would love to speak to the Recreation Advisory Board appointment. She is my neighbor. She is incredibly involved in the village. She's a fantastic neighbor. She volunteers obviously for Election Day activities, so it's lovely to see her there. I was begging her to join a board during our, our block Christmas party, so our holiday party, so I'm glad to see her name here. Just couldn't say too many nice things about her. She's, she's just fantastic, so congrats to the advisory board.
All right, that sounds great. So we will move on to our other vacancy that we are looking to fill this evening, and that is for library board. So we have a number of different applicants as we have been through this process with some vacancies. And I know I've had a chance to speak with a number of them who are all fantastic, and I believe the other trustees on the committee have had an opportunity to speak with some folks as well. We are coming here tonight though with a recommendation from President McCaig on the two appointments. One, supporting the appointment to the Recreation Advisory Board of trustee Kudo. Can you help me with the pronunciation so I don't butcher your neighbor's name? Shanta John Salley for the Recreation Advisory Board, and President McCaig is supporting the appointment of Anjum Alden to the library board. So as these are appointments that are made by the president and, you know, either confirmed or not by the village board, I am comfortable moving forward with both of these appointments, but want to obviously open it up to the trustees on the committee to hear your thoughts and open to a motion on these appointments or other appointments as well.
Sure, so I think, you know, first of all, it is incredible to have this, this many quality candidates apply for, for one of our volunteer boards. So very, very grateful to all of these folks here because, you know, hopefully if this isn't, if they're not selected for this board, they decide to stick around and volunteer for another board or for this board in the future. It's just so important that we have quality candidates in our volunteer committees because we really look to our volunteer committees for, for advice and, and we, we most likely take that advice to heart. So I would, you know, I, you know, I've, I've reviewed all the applications. Like I said, we have some really fantastic applications. I would be in support of Anjum Aldean. She is, she's somebody that I know in the community that is, that has done nothing but, but fantastic things, very positive, very, very good at, you know, collaboration, you know, and, and has the leadership skills when needed, but also has the ability to, to sit back and to approach this situation in a very sort of sensitive and empathetic way. She's able to listen to all sides and, and her experience sort of in the libraries and within the school and, you know, just her experience in the community and different groups really, really makes her stick out to me. That said, there are also some other fantastic candidates on this, on this list here, so she would be my, my recommendation.
Yeah, um, thank you. I, I agree, you know, at least in the first part, that I feel so lucky to have so many wonderful people, you know, apply for these positions. I think it's great to see so much renewed interest in serving the village. I just think our committees are so impressive and so helpful to operating the village, village board. I actually had, have a different recommendation for the library board. I would like to recommend one of the applicants, Chris McLean. I think for a few reasons, I think that Chris brings a different perspective and I would say newer, fresher perspective to this. She's a little bit more new to the village and Chris is here as well. Hi, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'll give my little speech first, but I think when I looked at Chris's application, you know, there were a number of positives that stuck out to me, but one thing that I kind of thought about was that was a person who I, I saw my own experience in very similarly as someone new to the village. When I was new to the village, I wanted to get involved in some way and I put myself up onto the, onto one of the committees and I didn't know which committee and would take me, and I was just lucky to be, to be part of it. And I was given an opportunity as a new resident to learn how the village works and be part of the community and grow from that experience. And I think having a fresh perspective, somebody who's new to the community, who can look at things differently, I think that's, that's a positive in this case, particularly on the library board. So my, my recommendation would be for Chris McLean for the library board. But again, I do second that we have so many great applicants. I have nothing against any other applicant, but just I think that newness is, is really important to me.
Thank you for that perspective. I, Chris, thanks for being here. It was nice to speak to you when we did this previously for the library board, so it's nice to put a face to a name and agree that we have so many wonderful people who are interested in serving. And I know that we will, you know, continue to have more vacancies and hopefully can get some of these folks into these boards and committees because it's a really vital part of the work we do to have our residents be a part of it. So that's great. Yes, President McCaig. Microphone.
I can take a moment to speak to the reason why I put forward Anjum Alden as the nominee. I, after the last discussion around vacancies, Ms. McLean and Ms. Alden were the other two applicants who were considered by the committee at that time. And so those were the two that I reviewed in preparation for this vacancy that came up soon after. And I reviewed President Smucker's requests and he was saying that the one skillset that they don't have on the library board currently, which they typically do have, is library environment experience, if not at the professional level from a degree perspective in different library settings. And so, you know, Anjum Alden does have that, and so that was the other, so that was sort of the tipping point. I'm one that I, if somebody is qualified to do the job, you know, I am close friends with Anjum, but it is not, that's not why I put her forward as a recommendation. She has not, she's done a lot of volunteer work for the school district, but she has never served on a village board or commission. So I would, yeah, I'm never going to, I just wanted to give you that context of why I put forward that name and it was in collaboration with the library board president.
Trustee Stockbrand.
Thank you. I would just like to support Sean Hayes because I believe that is a candidate or an applicant who is currently working in the information services field. And the other one I would support again, as I did the last time, was Kathy Schill. I just want to be, you know, her, she has been involved in the village, but not at the level that many have. And I think she's lived here for decades, but she hasn't been intimately involved in any group, and I see that as a plus. So she knows the village, she knows the culture, she knows the institutions, but she hasn't been closely involved in any of them, and so I think that would be a big plus. I am wondering, just for perspective, we have one attorney on the board right now. Kathy's an attorney. We have Wesley to correct, and then Mrs. Sparra is an attorney also. And who's, who's phasing out in June? I'm, I just want to be clear on where we are with terms.
Right now, the, the terms that are ending in June would be Wesley Warren and myself.
Okay, that was my understanding.
So this will be a full three-year term, correct? Starting in, is it three years?
Well, she's stepping down. I don't know if she was terming, if her term was up.
I thought that this was going to be two years of the...
Yeah, I think she was just...
That this would be...
...filling, but if somebody can correct me on that, but that was my understanding
that...
Yeah, this vacancy was created by someone who needed to resign due to medical reasons.
And so she's, this person that is appointed would be fulfilling a term ending when? In two years from now, we think, or we don't know?
Clerk Carroll is checking that.
Yes.
May 2026.
So two more years.
Yep.
Okay, all right. And so for those reasons, because of the professional background and the time in the village, I would support Sean Hayes and/or Kathy Schill. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, I appreciate hearing from trustees. If there's anybody out there who wants to say anything, happy to hear you, but don't want to put anybody on the spot, so just letting you know. Or trustee Kudo?
I can wait if you want to say something.
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
If you want to just make a little statement.
Okay, you don't have to though. I don't want to put you on the spot. I just didn't want to skip over you.
Speak like right up.
Okay. Like my home address? Okay, hi, I'm Chris McLean. My home address is 3937 North Prospect, so I'm really close. I just walked over. I'm, so I applied to library board because I was really excited and wanted to get involved in Shorewood. I've been, I'm a longtime visitor to Milwaukee and to Shorewood, and so we're very happy to finally get to move here with our kids. I am really enthusiastic about the prospect of getting to be involved, and I'm really excited to hear there's a lot of people involved here and involved in government. It's great to see a working, very cordial government experience. And I am glad to hear there's more openings coming up too, so I certainly will be applying as things come up. I'm enthusiastic about libraries because I love to, I mean, I've always been a big participant in libraries, and I love to support the idea of how libraries, where they're going and what those things are going to look like, especially being able to listen to both library staff and people in the community and be able to bring those voices together. But I look forward to hearing more from you guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know, as the liaison to the library board from the village board, you know, I think it's really important, the makeup of the board, the dynamic of the board, I think is incredibly important. What I think I really enjoy about, and I looked through all the different applications and really want to applaud the folks that applied, who sort of stepped up, who saw it on social media or otherwise, to participate in the village. What's really important for me is to continue to get new blood and new perspectives engaged in what we're doing here in the village of Shorewood. You know, whether you've been here for three months, three years, 30 years, you know, but you haven't been engaged for whatever reason, you know, there's, there are a lot of committees in Shorewood, and I think unfortunately what we're seeing sort of time and again are the same people that are serving time and again on either a board here or a board with the schools or this, that, or the other thing. And I think, you know, we have a rare opportunity here with so many wonderful applicants who don't have all of that experience on these boards, to come in and join a board, to come in and breathe some fresh air, to sort of stand up for the next two years, the next three years, as this board continues to grow and mature. And I just think it's unfortunate that when we, you know, we go back and we look at the folks that we've put on as of late, a lot of them have served many different boards, many different years. And Shorewood, you know, continues to grow. And so I, I would agree with, with trustee Lynn on Chris McLean. I think that it's time, the library board has some turnover with some new blood, with some folks who have not been, you know, intimately engaged with one of the large institutions in Shorewood. And so, you know, I, if I had a vote, I would be supporting Chris. If, you know, if the vote goes for Ms. Alden, then I'll be voting against at board level.
Right.
I would be supportive if it comes to that, too, Anjum Alden for the library board. You know, she's been a community builder in a lot of ways for many years. I'm not going to hold that experience against her in this instance, and I think we'll have more opportunities to put people who don't have that depth of experience, but still care about the community on the board. To President McCaig's point, she has not served on a board before, so that I don't think it's necessarily the same old, same old. I could go on, but that's where I would net out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, in that case, I think we've heard from everybody and I am ready to hear a motion if anybody is ready to make a motion.
Yeah, I can make a motion, and this is for, this is for both.
Yep, this would be for both appointments.
Oh boy, so, okay, so I move the recommendation of Anjum Aldean and...
Shanta John Salley.
Shanta John Salley to the, to be approved during the February 5th, 2024 village board meeting.
I will second that. And then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so that passes to one. And thank you, everybody. I really appreciated hearing all the feedback from folks. And Chris, thank you so much for coming in. It's really been wonderful getting to talk to you and have you here, and I'm very glad to hear that you are going to be open to future appointments because we would love to, I would love to get you on this board. I think you'd be really great. Sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Second that for sure.
And then we have one other agenda item that I know we've got, oh, we've got 10 minutes. I thought we were a little tighter on time than we are, and that is to consider amendments to Policy 33, attendance and training for volunteer committees and elected officials. And I believe this is one coming to us from the village manager.
Thank you. Attached in your packet is an amended number, policy number 33, that incorporates requirements for all of our volunteers and elected officials to complete training as set forth in the outline that's attached. It's recommended that the training requirements be included in the Board Committee Commission handbook. That handbook has not been updated since 2017, so right now we're going through the process of updating that document as well. So if this moves forward this evening, it won't be coming back to you until the first meeting in March. Moving forward, we would update the handbook administratively in preparation of putting together the outline of training modules. I reached out to the league as well as our insurer, and a, the league has now started to put the local government 101 training and webinars into modules that officials can take at various times throughout the year. The insurer also has taken the timeline or the training outline and was going to be speaking to their board about perhaps doing the same type of training for all of the members in the league, which I think would be really helpful and beneficial. They've had some, but they're a little outdated, so we'll have to be patient for our first couple of years, but I plan on being in contact with them because I really think that this could be a good change for both the insurer and for the League of Wisconsin municipalities to provide this type of reference for all of our, our volunteer members and officials. Training would be required of all volunteers and elected officials serving as of June 1, 2024. So everyone would participate in those trainings. After the first year of all volunteer and elected members completing those trainings, it would be required as a condition of appointment, reappointment, election, or reelection of a board member. And the thought there is that it's a refresher, right? We have a lot of stuff that goes on all of the time. We can sit on boards, but sometimes, you know, we just need a refresher from where we're at with some of the rules and regulations. One of the benefits of know before is that it will be least administratively burdensome from the perspective that it will track members, training deadlines required, so that there's an easy snapshot that can be looked at, so that it doesn't put a burden on the clerk as well as any of the staff liaisons. It's just automatically collected in that database. It also allows us the opportunity to upload new video and tradings as they become available so that we can swap out maybe some of the older content that really hasn't changed, but maybe a, in, you know, 2020 video would be better than 1983. So it's just a little bit, or comical.
Yeah, every time I see like old training videos from corporations from the 80s, they're from there, yeah.
Yeah.
But yes, more, more appropriate, right?
One of the other reasons why we think doing this by know before would be more beneficial is we've had declined involvement and participation in our annual Board Committee Commission trainings that we have typically held in May of each year after the, or May or June of each year after the appointment cycle. Ever since COVID, the game's changed and people, we want to encourage people to participate, and sometimes that's not going to be very flexible with their schedule. If they have to come in for this one night and go through training, it also keeps it in shorter doses. So it's been proven theory that if you get things in repetition and those small doses, you're more likely to remember versus sitting down and having to listen to something for an hour and a half. So we're looking forward to swapping out that annual training, incorporating it with this to make it more relevant for people and allow them the opportunity to do it on their own timetable. And with that, I'm up for any questions? Comments, thoughts, revisions?
This all makes sense to me, but if anybody else has anything, trustee Stockbrand, just if any other committee members have something first, and then you're up.
I would just say I really appreciate you putting this together. I think this is a great idea and I think something that's necessary for our boards and committees specifically because, you know, it can be hard to know exactly what's the right thing to do at all times, and I think staying on top of training is, is really important and it just seems like a useful tool and something that just is a net benefit for the, for the village and for the operation of the government. So thank you for putting this all together.
You're welcome.
I echo trustee Lynn, and I'm just wondering if there is anything, you know, as far as our sort of the EDI work that we've been doing, if we can include that in sort of this, in this as well, I think that would be a fantastic.
So it's funny that you mentioned that. This is kind of a phase one for me because as I went through the process, I was like, oh, there's so many things now we can, you know, like, let's see how this is, let's see how this rolls out. But there were some other, in addition to some EDI work, there's also some of the processes that we have on an annual basis that I think would be helpful to just put in a PowerPoint that you could watch and slide through. So one would be, you know, committee initiative process, what the different roles of the standing committees are, you know, just easy, quick hits that are two, three minutes that I think would be really helpful. Because what we know about this business is that the seats are always changing, right? So we want to try to gear someone, whether it's a new committee chair, elected official, or someone similar to Chris who came to the meeting tonight, you know, giving them an opportunity to just get a quick hit on what this is and, and what kind of roles and expectations are for the scope of those positions. Because again, you know, I guess my focus here is that we want to be as accessible as possible so that the talented people we have in our community can serve. And so this, everyone, it's one of the best things about local government, but I think sometimes it's a little intimidating to people or they don't necessarily know how to get involved. So having that be a part of it, I think, could really help us with also further recruitment.
Talking. Thank you. Trustee Stockbrand?
Thank you. So I'm wondering, when we add, I'm just trying to figure out about how many people will be training, like when we have to do this first push of all this training, it's conservation, parks and public spaces, are we going to do this with the REC advisory board? That's a combined district, school district, senior resources, advisory board, the bid, CDA. We're up to dozens of people.
Yep.
So what's the cost? Know before, what is a, are we good? Are we covered? Do we have to add more subscriptions? Increase our license? What do we have to do?
No.
It's all covered for this additional dozens of people?
Yes.
Okay. I think it's a balancing act here. We don't want to discourage people by putting an undue burden on them. You're coming forward to volunteer. On the other hand, it does sort of give you a feel for what you're in for. I guess my thinking would be, I was trying to add up the, the different numbers of, I mean, the initial group looked like it was about a 40-minute commitment to do that first set of videos. I mean, I'm thinking, I know it's appealing to add all kinds of things, EDI, but I think you kind of have to be respectful of people's time who have decided to come forward. And I would start with the nuts and bolts requirements. It'd be nice if you could keep it under two hours. I just think that, that's not an, you know, that's a reasonable commitment that you can expect people to take. And as we have seen, there's very important stuff that should be covered about state law, open meetings. And I think we have to focus on those, those points first, that they be covered and then not be an over two hour. I think that would be too much to expect people to do a two-hour training session to be a village bond.
Agreed. So the, some of the ideas and concepts that I talked about additionally, those are in a parking lot on a list for, oh, if this takes off or we want to try to do something more, different concepts to explore, but what you have before you are, is the nuts and bolts.
Was there, was there training before? Because I was on the REC advisory board and I had no training.
So annually, the village has had a training once a year, but that occurs in May or June, and then all new committee members or volunteers are asked to attend that training. And we cover many of the same things that are listed here on this list, and it usually went for about an hour and a half to two hours. This would not be done in one fell swoop. It would be done, rolled out, out over a period of time. So when you are viewing something, you're really viewing it for two minutes, you know, or four minutes and three seconds.
And so then each applicant that is appointed would click, I watched how to, you know, comply with open meetings law. And then, and so it really would be that peak meal, but the software would do the bird dog.
Correct.
But they have 30 days. There was a 30-day, which I think is reasonable. I mean, that's why it's important to keep it to under two hours. In my view, if you, it seemed to me the training requirement was 30 days from when you're appointed to complete your training, and I think you have to, you have to put a deadline on it.
So, and I can go and clarify that, but the intent of that 30 days was to actually have them sign the acknowledgement form, that the fact that they've looked at the Board Committee Commission handbook, that goes through in total. We've always had that and actually always have required that of people. That goes through in total. We've always had that and actually always have required that of people. What it says in there is that it also has some acknowledge that there's training coming forth. And this is something that I think we'd be proactive and sharing with people upfront. Genuinely, I think people want to know how to interact in these meetings and how the protocol works. And so many times, it comes off as maybe a little boring. So we you know, it can be a little bit more of a snoozer, which is why kind of the focus on and in small segments was a little bit more sought after by me because it can be tiring. So we would start the acknowledgement form. I would actually move to a Google database so that they could submit it by Google Forms, their acknowledgement. So then again, we're not having to manually track an acknowledgement form that comes in in paper format and how they go about doing it. So every time I've looked at a module, I don't want it to create more burden. And you know what? We can try it for a year. And I'm a fan of going back for some process improvement. So.
I think that makes a lot of sense. And I know we're over time here and we've got our full village board meeting to get started two minutes ago. So I know.
Just a tiny bit of color to it and then we can, you know. So I also, I also moonlight as a hockey coach. You know, I volunteer as a hockey coach. Been doing that for a very long time now. And through that process to become a certified hockey coach, we not only have to sit through like a several hour-long session of this type of thing, going through all the different things that could happen, you know, everything from hockey locker rooms to on the ice, to parents, to politics, all that stuff. We have to sit there and do a training module for that. Not only that, but we have to do in-person, well, Zoom now, but like we go into these breakout groups for two days, four hours apiece. So, and that's just to be a hockey coach. Okay, so we're talking about trying to be an elected official that's governing a community. I think this is the very least we could, we could probably do to help people get prepared to be in this situation. So I'm just, I'm in full support. I think this is great. I wish I had more of a resource like this when I first started. So.
Great. So then our trustee Lynn, did you have anything or are we ready?
I've got a motion.
Amazing. Thank you.
I move to approve amended policy number 33, attendance and training for volunteer committee and elected officials.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Passes three zero and we'll head.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
So moved.
Great. We are, yeah, we are second. I will assume that was a second.
It's a second.
Was the intent. And then we will stand adjourned at 7:34 PM. Thank you.
Good work. Way to adjourn.
Why don't we take a, just a quick break?
For your patience, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the village board to order at 7:39 PM. All trustees are present. Has this meeting been publicly noticed?
The meeting has been properly noticed and posted according to law.
Thank you. Item four, special order of business for a consider resolution 2024-03, an agreement between the city of Milwaukee and the village of Shorewood for the purchase of water at wholesale. This comes to us from Director Bushlick. I am assuming everybody has read the materials in their packet. And I really appreciate all the thought and care that has gone into this. So are there questions or can we take a motion at this time? Oh, yes?
If you don't mind, I would like to introduce this evening Pat Polly, who is the Milwaukee Water Works Superintendent, who's here to visit.
Patrick Polly, Milwaukee Water Works Superintendent. I am just here in support of approval of the resolution. So, and if you have any questions, I am available.
Well, thank you for making the trip up. Any questions for the superintendent or Director Bushlick at this time? Yes.
I can make a motion if there's no questions. So I move to, I move approval of resolution 2024-03, an amendment between the city of Milwaukee and the village of Shorewood for the purchase of water at wholesale for the term.
I'll second that.
All right. There's a motion by trustee Ursing, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff. Any discussion? Yes?
Just to clarify, we don't have any other options for water besides this, so we're grateful to have it. Is that correct? And the Public Service Commission will determine the rate for us. So I guess we just look forward to a longer continued relationship that doesn't ever end up in court again. It looks like that was quite a long, a long extravaganza getting to the agreement. So thank you.
The history here is just, is fascinating and I, it's, it's really cool to be part of this and help bring water to the village. I mean, what an exciting thing.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
President McCaig?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Lynn? Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Ursing?
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Aye.
Trustee Stokebrand?
Aye.
Motion carried seven zero.
All right. The second item is asking us to waive the purchasing policy and approve proceeding with city water to proposal in the amount of $23,295. Are there any questions or motion?
I'd be fine to make a motion. I move to waive the purchasing policy and approve proceeding with city water proposal in the amount of $23,295.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Yes, trustee Stokebrand?
When I was going through this, I noticed there's a couple of, there's some numbers that are quite, don't quite add up. And I'm guessing if you, let's see, it was on page at the bottom of 77?
Correct. Director Bushlick had advised me of that. I think there was a proposal that was put out there from last year, like in July, that didn't account for the new the new requirements and improvements that they made just recently in December. And so the proposal was updated for that. So that 6,880 is an old number. The new number is the one that is located on the bottom of that table.
In the chart, the 8,350.
Correct. So the total between both adds up to that 23,000.
Okay. So my overall takeaway from this was, we're way ahead of the game here by doing this. We're moving fast. Which brings up the second question, which is, or my first question, which is, why are we not going out for an RFP on? If we have plenty of time, I'm concerned that we, if we continue to have a relationship with a vendor without doing an RFP, it's, we're not really doing our job in terms of oversight and accountability. And so if we have plenty of time, is there a hardship that isn't keeping us from doing an RFP? Because, I mean, that's, you know, waiving the purchasing policy to me is, is a very serious thing to not follow through on.
Well, I think at this point, we have a motion on the floor. And so if this motion fails, then there could be a motion for an RFP, to take it to RFP. But there is a first and a second. Why don't we follow through with this vote? If there's no further discussion?
Was the, part of clarification, was the question from trustee Stokebrand, that she wanted to go to an RFP or she was wondering why we hadn't gone to RFP?
Oh, please. I heard it as, should, we should go to an RFP.
I'll take whatever I can get at this point for information.
I think one, well, I'm going to share, if you're asking to change the direction, that's, wouldn't do that. Second in the motion. What if there was a bit of clarification?
Could you please, trustee Stokebrand, could you please clarify? I'm sorry if I misunderstood your statements.
Yeah, I'm wondering why we're not going for an RFP. Is there, would it be a hardship? Would it be a burden?
From a timeline perspective, yes, it would be. So I'll let, allow Director Bushlick to speak to the plan, but I'm specifically focused on the utility finance plan, that tenure analysis, looking to conclude that so we can use that baseline data and include that within the data set for the long-range financial plan. While I recognize that that's something that we do with you in May of each year, that data set, it's going to take some time to get to make sure that we're also compliant and using the correct forecasting. But that's usually solidified and done in, at the beginning of April, so that we're running numbers on that whole plan and being able to bring it back to you in that May timeframe. And that's important from a finance perspective because I know that we're leaning into a next year of borrowing for purposes of like drive and those improvements. And I want to make sure that while we're grasping, while we're taking a snapshot in time of what we know, that's going to be the most beneficial tool for us internally to be able to, it's a model, right? We're going to be able to look at that model and then see what happens with different scenarios. So that is from a business perspective, critical to the work that we do to financial plan. With regards to the PSC report, because we're a little ahead of the curve and while we are, I would say that you're being prudent with the improvements that you're looking to make when you're doing these large scope infrastructure projects. Every time you dig up a road, you will degrade the surface and what happens above the road. So one of the reasons why we wanted to continue and do these improvements specifically related to service replacements is that we would take advantage of that time when the road's already dug up to do the improvements so that we could move forward because it's really most beneficial from a disruption standpoint to property owners. Financially prudent because of the bidding the contract at that time. But then also it allows us to do that work and then not have to cut back into the road at a future point in time. And that concludes my update on the finance plan. Director Bushlick, if you want to comment on the utility plan. What I have to offer on that is that it, it has a due date of October 2024 and they've continued to refine, refine the administrative guidance, I guess, in terms of how to proceed with that.
I guess if I may, while we're making the transition, I mean, please feel free to come forward. But I guess what I'm, I mean, my interpretation of the that it's good to have a policy, a purchasing policy, but when the policy interferes with our ability to get either the best outcome for the community, meaning the residents, in terms of value or level of expertise, then that's when staff comes to us to consider waiving such policy. And so that's what I feel, what, that's my understanding of why we are being asked to waive the policy and not going to RFP for the feeling that it would interfere with us getting the best outcome for the community. So I'm not saying that anyone has to agree with that, but just for my own understanding, Director Bushlick and manager Ewald, would you say that that's accurate, that that's why you are? That if we went to RFP, we would not be able to maintain this timeline? And also the level of expertise with the relationship that we have with them is also pertinent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything you'd like to add, Director Bushlick? Okay. Trustee Stokebrand?
The thing that's troublesome is, you know, the LCRI was completed in November. And we had an opportunity to meet in January and we were told that we couldn't meet in January for the first meeting because of staff. And now we're finding out that we don't have time to do an RFP. And so I'll be voting no because I think that we're not, we're not doing the job that we're brought here. We should be able to take this to an RFP. We should be able to plan ahead. We should be able to have the meetings we're supposed to have. And it's unfortunate that we can't.
Point taken. Trustee Lynn?
Yeah, I just, I disagree with that. I'm, I'm okay voting for this now. And I think at some point, you know, we, we do have to be the decision makers and so I'm happy making this decision.
Okay. Any further trustee comments at this time? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor say, is this a resolution? All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries five two. All right. That concludes new special order of business for this evening. We will move on to item five, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening? All right. Motion by trustee Ursing, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff. Any discussion? Yes, trustee Kudo?
I'd like to remove item A, if I could, please?
Item A? Anyone else? Trustee Stokebrand?
Item B, please.
Five B? Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exceptions of five A and five B say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, moving on to item six, items removed from the consent agenda. We have item five A, presentation of accounts, February fifth, twenty twenty-four. Trustee Kudo.
Yep, I was just, a quick question, I was going through the accounts, looking at the municipal garage account, specifically the repairs to truck twenty-five, I think the next one is excavator repairs.
Can you give us a page?
Five of sixteen, the bottom of five of sixteen.
That appears to be ninety-five in the packet for, on, for me.
Oh, sorry, I'm going, I'm multimodal here with computer screens. I'm just wondering, those just seem like really high repair bills to me, between Autobody and McQueen, McQueen Equipment, I'm wondering if, if that is an excavator repair? It's just not, and truck number twenty-five, I'm wondering what truck number twenty-five is?
Thank you for raising the question, but did you, were you able to send an email prior for?
No.
Okay, in the future, please, if you're going to dig into, if anyone is going to dig into this kind of level of detail, please notify staff appropriate via email so that we make sure we have the information on hand.
My recollection is that truck twenty-five is one of our building maintenance vehicles, that belongs to one of, we have two vehicles for building maintenance staff. I believe that's the smaller of the two. I, I can certainly have Dan reach out to you to talk about the excavator repair.
Is that what it was? It just wasn't, it was?
If that, I.
Okay.
What, what is the line description?
Vector, is that the?
Oh, vector. So the vector is our vac truck. It's, it's actually the largest and most expensive piece of equipment that the village owns. That's owned by the sewer utility.
It's relatively new, right?
It's three or four years old.
Okay.
And it is an expensive piece of equipment to maintain, but it is an essential piece of equipment for operating our sewer collection system.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I also had a question, and I did email George about this. On the first page, the very first item, the general government finance officers annual conference is under the general fund, and I believe that should be under, there's another, there was a state event that apparently finance director went to also in those, so this is miscategorized and should be under fifteen-ten, fifty-one, nine, zero, zero. They're both related to the same thing, so it's, it's improperly categorized, I believe. And then just below that, a board, a board cost, we have music licensing. I, I was just curious that that's, is allocated to a board cost.
So it's a license that the village obtained, it's the first year we've had to do that. We approved those applications in December.
I remember that, but that is under a board cost. It's surprising to me, instead of general fund or?
We've never had the expense before, and so that's a line item it was associated with.
I guess I'd ask that that be re-categorized, because it doesn't seem to fit very well. Other licensing fees, you know, for the board to, for that to be under our board category seems inappropriate.
Point taken. All right, is there a motion to approve presentations of accounts with those questions, those items discussed?
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee Kudo, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item five B, minutes. Trustee Stokebrand?
I'm looking here. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the last, on number four, order of special business, Friends of the Shorewood Nature Preserve presented the members of the board, and then again, at the end of that paragraph, that they hope to bring the awareness that their organization hopes to bring to the nature preserve in the village of Shorewood. It's just sort of to clarify that. And then there was another point, I believe, under ten reports of village officials, just wanted to make clear there was a staffing shortage, and that it was, even though there has been a staffing shortage, he was concerned with current staffing. That's referring to trustee Kudo, not the previous reference, that was Pat Lanane. So if we could just insert trustee Kudo for he, and then farther in that same paragraph, trustee Kudo expressed appreciation to manager Ewald and assistant manager Ewald, so we want to make sure that says Anderson. And with that, I'll move to approve the minutes of January sixteenth.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Kudo. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. With that, we can move on to public hearings, although we have none this evening. Next is citizens to be heard. This item is for matters not on the agenda. Is there anyone joining us virtually tonight who would like to be heard on a matter? And there's no one in person. Okay, there's no one to be heard this evening. Moving on to new business, nine A, consider North Shore Water Commission MOU for emergency water access. This also comes to us from Director Bushlick and is necessary and appreciated as emergency backup with the major CC phase two project this summer. Are there any questions before we take a motion? Trustee Ursink?
I move approval of the emergency water supply memorandum of understanding with the North Shore Water Commission communities.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm just glad somebody thought of this. It's kind of a big deal. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Nine B, consider modification to policy nine, concrete walks and approaches in public highways. This came to us from Public Works Committee with a recommendation to approve. Trustee Ursink, is there anything you want to add?
Nothing that.
Pretty straightforward.
Straightforward, yeah.
All right, with that, I would like, would you like to make a motion?
I'd love to. Thank you. I move that policy nine, concrete walks and approaches in public highways be amended to include a street tree amend, addendum, and be retitled concrete walks and approaches in the public right away.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. This is a, this is not a roll call, because it's a policy, right? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to nine C, consider modification to policy forty-two, concrete replacement criteria. This also comes to us with a recommendation to approve from the Committee of Public Works. Chair Ursink, is there anything you'd like to add?
Same as the last, yeah, this is pretty straightforward.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. So I move that policy forty-two, concrete walks and approaches in public highways be amended to establish carriage walk replacement responsibility and modify standards regarding the use of concrete grinding.
I'll second.
All right, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I believe that might conclude the Director Bushlick portion of the agenda for this evening. Drive safe.
Thank you, Director Bushlick.
Yes, thank you for your time. Item nine D, consider resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four, temporarily halting enforcement of current ordinance. This pertains to Nomo May, which had its inaugural run last year and is coming back before us this evening. That excites me. It means it's almost spring. And it comes to us from the Conservation Committee. There, do we have a liaison to conserva, you shouldn't, trustee Ursink, is there anything you'd like to add?
I was, I was not at this meeting that they discussed this, so I have nothing to add to this.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
I sure can. I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four and demonstration, and demonstration areas in park spaces.
Second.
Okay. Are you sure about that? Okay, okay, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Arndorfer. Let's see, is there any discussion? Is there anyone who wants to be heard on this matter? Manager Anderson or trustee Stokebrand?
Trustee Stokebrand would like to go first?
I just wanted to be clear here. So the resolution itself is just to temporarily pause, but then we've added into the motion that we're going to continue the pilot plots, I'll call them, that we had last year. Is that correct? The ones that are outlined in the memo from twenty twenty-two? I guess I saw Leanne already left.
That's right, sorry. If I may.
Thank you.
Right, last year, we brought these items separately, so the resolution came first, and then a number of months later, we brought the demonstration areas after they were walked with our landscape contractor and some of the volunteers from the Conservation Committee, who I'm feverishly texting to see if they'd like to join. I know a couple of them wanted to speak on this item as well. But I just thought it would be efficient to have both items under one motion.
My concern would be the downer, the one that's going to be on the edge of that meridian that would be close to downer. Downer's going to be a war zone. It might be growing wild anyway. You know, I just, I wonder if they want to remove that one from the list. I don't know if anyone should be close to that construction.
All right, maybe we could, we could monitor that. All right, there was a resident Linda Frank who was interested in speaking this evening, but I don't know if she's been able to join us.
She has not yet, but I've just got, I just admitted Joey, who's a member of the Conservation Committee.
Okay, hi Joey, we have already a motion to support with a second on the floor. If there's anything you'd like to add from the committee's perspective, I think this was successful last year.
It, let's see, can you?
Yes.
No. It was, it was amazingly successful last year. I was surprised at the enthusiasm in the village. Three of us walked every street in the residential areas of the village and counted lawns, eleven, more than eleven hundred lawns went unmowed as of May twenty-first. We had all kinds of excitement on, on social media. We had a class at Lake Bluff that was using this as a science exercise to learn about pollinators and their dependence on native plants. It was, I think it really brought the village together, and a bunch of bees got something to eat, so that was good.
Great, thank you so much.
I would just add, my daughter Jane was in that class at Lake Bluff that did that, so I heard about it through her, she did, yes, and she made sure that it did not mow.
Okay.
Yeah, there's nothing like getting a bunch of fifth graders involved on your team.
Right. All right, thank you. I am excited to support this as well this year. Thank you for your work on this and bringing it back. All those in favor say aye. Oh, oh, it is a resolution, even better. This will be a resolution and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
President McKay?
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Aye.
Trustee Stokebrand?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
You guys are great, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. All right. Moving on, I believe we have one more order of business, new business this evening. Nine E, consider volunteer, volunteer committee appointments. There are two that are coming out of the Judiciary Personnel and Licensing Committee from earlier this evening. A recommendation or to confirm Anjum Alden for the library board and Shanta Jansali for the Recreation Advisory Board. The vote was five-two, coming out of committee, oh no, it was two.
Two-one.
It was two-one, coming out of committee. I am hoping that there was a lot of discussion, and I look forward to supporting and look forward to the confirmation of these two individuals. With that, could I have a motion, please? Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
First of all, I'm just going to tell you what I'm going, I'm going to separate them out, because I think that's a wise choice, because these are two different appointments, and I'm kind of bothered that they were put together in the first place, because I, I don't think that's fair to people. So I am going to move to approve Shanta Jansali to the Recreation Advisory Board.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Kudo. I am going to, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Is there a motion to approve Anjum Alden for the library board? Motion to confirm the appointment of Anjum Alden for the library board. Trustee Stokebrand?
Could I just ask a question?
Point of order.
Point of order. Why do we not have the Business Improvement District to bid people by name in the motion?
I don't know. Were they?
I'll make a motion. Do you want a motion or not?
Could you just slow down a little bit, please? I'm going to move to the memo, so I'm making sure that I'm following this. Okay. So, point of order, I would like to continue with the library board appointment, and then we would take, as you asked, we'll take the Business Improvement District appointments third. So trustee Ursink?
So there are two, I guess we could get through, let's get the library, and then we can talk about it, because it says, there's, there's two recommendations for names here.
Uh, no, so.
It means number. No, oh, number two, okay, okay.
So.
When I talked to Janet earlier, she gave me two names that she recommended as well, so.
Yeah, no.
Three.
Yeah, there's three, but she gave.
Three seats and three applicants.
Okay.
And we did not have those in committee.
They just came straight here. They actually, let's just move forward.
Sorry.
If, if, we could just go with the process that I'm asking for, and then we'll clarify.
Yep.
So trustee Ursink, did you want to make a motion?
Yes, so I move to approve Anjum Aldean for, to appointment to the library board.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Arndorfer. Any discussion? Trustee Lynn? Okay, trustee Stokebrand?
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate that I think it's important to try to bring some people in that haven't been involved that much in the community before, and so I would like to, again, recommend we consider Kathy Schill or Sean Hayes.
Noted.
I'm happy to support Anjum Aldean at this, at this time, at the, at this level. I think she's a qualified candidate, and I think we'll do a great job. So I'm, I think the village is lucky to have her.
All right, thank you. At this time, I would like to ask for all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries five-two. Moving on to the Business Improvement District, typically these recommendations do just come to the full board and, because they are, I believe they are present in appointments with confirmation of the board, and the recommendations come to us from Janet Henning at the Business District Director. And so to your point, trustee Stokebrand, do we have the email with the names? Oh, no, they're just right up here. So is there a motion to approve, to confirm? So is there a motion to approve, to confirm Nicole Ania, Elise Wabashewski, and Casey Murdock to the Business Improvement District?
So moved.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. That concludes new business for this evening, and we are now moving on to village board reports. And I believe I have one report that I can think of. We convened the by board last week. Trustee Arndorfer and then school board member Ellen Ekman and President Berry convened to consider recommending a joint convening of our two full boards to hear a presentation from Teague Waley Smith? Yep.
Yeah.
On the intersection between housing, the, the cost of housing, the availability of housing, and school enrollment and school districts. And so there's a way to look at that data side by side, and so the recommendation from the committee was to, in fact, invite him to, to invite the two boards to convene in the near future, the spring, and hear that presentation.
That sounds great. I worked really closely with Teague when we both were at Milwaukee County, and he's fantastic, so very interested to hear what he has to say.
Yeah, he's done a number of presentations for us kind of leading up, and so this one will really include, it'll kind of be a highlights reel, and then with adding in this school census data on top of that. So, and the framing really is educational in nature. It is a pretty narrow intersection. It really is to encourage us to look at some of our beliefs and perhaps resistance, but also opportunities to create more opportunities for housing and to diversify housing. And, but it is not a policy discussion by any means. It is really a stakeholder educational experience, and it will be open to the public as well. So trustee Arndorfer, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I thought it was a good.
All right, trustee. Trustee Stokbrand, you attended as well. Did you want to add anything? All right, any other board reports, liaison meetings, reports? Yes.
You know, unfortunately, we had to cancel the chill this past weekend, you know, it's very sad, very sad, weather did not cooperate. Yeah, so. So the, and I'm not sure the ice rink is going to make it through the rest of the season, so we had a good solid week of skating on that rink, and it was enjoyed by many. So, next time we put it up, make sure if it's cold and the ice is hard, get out there and skate, because you never know, it's going to be, what's going to happen to it.
Can't bank on it. Okay. All right. Hearing none, village manager?
It was a little bit like Christmas this morning for me because I took an approach down Downer Avenue to see all the construction barrels and CC phase two starting. So. I know Jim has like a captive seat, you know, and I kind of watched this big project along the way. But wanted to ask. Yes, I love it.
I'm just here for the journey.
So I had some really good signage, of course, to trustee Stokbrand's point, want to try to stay out of the area. But wanted to just kind of get a feel for how they were mobilizing today. So that roadway is going to be open to, to local traffic, and then starting next week, on the 12th, it's going to shut down for those hard closures. So I was wondering if any of the trustees would want to share my feature this week, is it actually just going to be posted on educating people about the detour routes, right? Because we have Downer that's going to be closed, but then we also have Milwaukee that's closing Lake Drive in the summer, which is a little fur under my saddle.
So are they not, Downer south of Edgewood will not be under when you get?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. But I just want to educate people on some of the traffic patterns, and so I, whatever we put out as the feature, if you have different sites that you use a lot to share information, if you could just share it out to kind of get people familiar with some of the changes that are happening. I know the Milwaukee Lake Drive with stop project is not ours, but I just think the more we can start getting the word out there, the better it would be. So thank you for helping, if you can. If not, no big deal, but I just want to try to, you know, get people, start that training early.
What is the start date for Downer? I mean.
Right, they started mobilization today.
But I mean, when you can't, can you not drive on it now?
The 12th.
Oh.
What if you had a vehicle that could drive on it? Can you still drive on it?
We will endeavor to see that experiment.
Just saying. I could come get you, it's no problem.
Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Can we jump back to trustee reports? I'm sorry, I had a very short report that I forgot to mention. I attended a UWM men's basketball game at the Klaski Center the other day off of Edgewood, and as I was walking, I was with my daughters, and as we were walking out, a resident who I didn't recognize passed by on a bicycle and personally thanked me for the redesign of Edgewood Avenue, and then took off on his bike. So apparently at least one person likes it, so I just wanted to report that and just, because it was very interesting that I got that call out just on the street, so.
I can say that I, I don't know that everybody heard, but I was in Green Bay last week for business, and Mayor Gingrich, we made the connection around Shorewood, and he said that he's really been watching our pedestrian calming efforts and the advisory bike lanes. Wants some himself.
Oh, this is great. I mean, I was on it today. I've been on it a couple of times, and I try to like make an effort to take Edgewood, just to, just to interact with it, and I think it works great. And I've been meaning to email the chief police to see what the accident reports have been. I'd love to share that information. I think people were really nervous. There's going to be a lot of accidents that happened on Edgewood, and so I'm curious to know how many accidents may have happened on that street so far, if any.
The interesting time is going to be in the summer, if those bike lanes are heavily utilized, and the cars need to move into those bike lanes, get around each other. That's.
Future items, consideration? I don't think we have any this evening. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any objections? Then we are adjourned at 8:19 PM. Thank you, everyone.